Welcome, this is the Prattville Planning Commission. Madam Secretary, could you please call roll?
Mayor Gillespie, Councilman Bowles, Chairman Smith, Vice Chair Gardner, Chief Johnson, Ms. Carpenter, Mr. Hall, Mr. McCauley, and Mr. Nelson.
Thank you. I think everybody perhaps saw the minutes from December the 18th and the February the 19th minutes sent to them via email. Does anybody note any corrections that needed to be made to those minutes? Do I have a motion to accept the minutes as?
So moved.
So moved, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, signify by raising your right hand. All right, there is no old business. We will go on to item number one. Mr. Gardner, what we got? No, we don't have anything to read in, do we? It appears, Mr. Joel, come on up here and talk to us about this one.
Good afternoon.
There you go, I got it.
This is, for many of you, this will be the first time you've seen this type of request. You have, before you, you have a request to provide a recommendation to the City Council on a request to accept a private street as a publicly maintained road. A 20, excuse me, a 2001 resolution by the council set up a process by which they receive these applications for acceptance as a public street, and they are then referred to the Planning Commission for recommendation. You can see in your packet, there's a copy of that resolution total items that are supposed to be reviewed. I'm going to ask that you hold this today. If you've read the memorandum, you know the reasons for that request. Primarily, and part of our research provides you with good information, we determined that the folks that had actually signed petition to accept the road were not the ones that actually own the property that's, that the road crosses. And we're not saying that that's our recommendation. We're saying we need to clear that up. I've talked to the councilman who brought that forward. I've talked to Mr. Abney and told him the reasons for this asking that it be held. We'll be able to provide you better information at your next meeting. But at this point, looking at it, we would just have to say that because it's a procedural matter at this point, that the folks that need to sign that are not the ones that signed that application.
No.
Okay, so at this point, the City Council couldn't even act on it because it's not even the right folks. So we want to make sure that we give it the best evaluation and the best chance for procedurally that to proceed.
Mr. Hall, would you like to ask a question?
Mr. Chairman, this came up once before during my turn at tenure as on the council, and having said that, I move that we hold this.
All right, all in favor, signify by raising your right hand. Opposed, like sign. It appears it is held. Our next item, item number two, premier place, plat number three. What's going on with this, Mr. Joel?
Yes, sir, that is a replat of an existing premier plat, premier place plat number two. You have a request to basically take what was lot four, which was a larger parcel, and combine a piece of that with parcel four C to create what they're calling six A. Let you catch up on that. That would take the parcel that is directly behind the Chick-fil-A and then add a portion of the parking area to that lot. As a straight replat, the city staff has no question. There's a question about cross-access easements that we have asked for clarification on. And as long as those cross-access and cross-parking agreements are maintained, we see no problem with this plat. They have provided information back saying that's the case. We've asked for actual documents, but if you're willing to approve it, if we see any issue, we will just refuse to sign the plat. At this point, I don't anticipate any.
We won't say.
A replat is required to say, by your procedure, is a simple motion and a vote.
Someone might want to give me a motion. All right, as requested by the city planning department? Or whatever, how are we going to say that?
Contingent upon all questions being resolved.
All right, is there, is there a second to Mr. Dallas's motion? All right, all in favor, signify by raising your right hand. Opposed, like sign. All right, we're moving on, the sketch plan, Glenbrook, phase four and seven. Can somebody read that in? Ms. Carpenter, can you read that in for me? Thank you, Ms. Carpenter.
Sketch plan Glenbrook subdivision phase four through seven, March 19th, 2015. Whereas Stone Martin Builders is the developer of Glenbrook subdivision phase four through seven, and whereas the proposed development is located outside the city limits, at the south side of Old Ridge Road, west of existing Glenbrook subdivision plats one and two, and whereas the initial sketch plan was approved on May 16, 2013, as Glenbrook subdivision phase three through six, endorsing the realignment plan of Old Ridge Road, and whereas a revised sketch plan was approved for the development on September 18, 2014, and whereas the city department has reviewed and commented on the proposed development. Now therefore be it resolved that the City of Prattville Planning Commission hereby gives its favorable review of the submitted revised sketch plan of Glenbrook subdivision phase four through seven, so moved.
All right.
That's second.
Second, thank you. Discussion and/or would Mr. Blake like to, Mr. Rice? One of y'all want to come up and talk, either one of them?
I'll just bring it with me.
All right.
Maybe easier, where can y'all see it? Right there?
Yes, sir. Okay. What we doing, Mr. Rice?
Duke, sir?
What are we going to do?
This is essentially comparable to the master plan that was approved, not the last time, but the time before that. It's all based on the park location. This is taking the park back to the original location that I believe everybody liked better. We figured out a way to deal with this piece of property better than we thought we were going to be able to. So we moved it back to what we understood everyone really liked better anyway. It is shown as 9.66 acres instead of 10. I've already received comments from planning to try to bump that back up to 10, and we can do that. That's not a problem. So if it should be approved, I'd be happy to get an approval subject to that comment. That shouldn't be an issue to get back to 10 acres. Other than that, there's not a lot of changes. The original, some of the original master plans showed some ponds way down in here. We have actually tightened this up, pulled it in, reduced the number of lots in this subdivision. Once we had real field-run topo and got good data, we saw that we had a little less area than we thought, and it made more sense. We reduced some lots, pulled some of the roads in, and this will actually now be an amenity area that's serving a wet retention facility. It'll be right there to look like a pond. We've got it planned with a three-foot seawall around it, and it'll be pretty nice. And other than that, the layout is essentially what y'all have now been used to seeing for about 18 months. But those are really the only, the only real changes to the plan.
Where are we on, there's how many divisions? There's, let's see.
The way we've got it numbered, this is all, and it was really for ease of data down here. All of this is phase four.
All right, that's one.
That obviously, that'll be multiple sub-phases. We're referring to all of this as phase five. All of this is phase six, and then all of this is phase seven up there, simply because it's so far down the road to try to plan it out right now. We'd just be pie in the sky type thought process.
My only big thing is I realize that moving the park to where it is now was, is a good thing. However, we have moved that park three or four times. Is it going to be built in this phase? Yes or no?
Y'all will see next month preliminary plat, full construction drawings for this port for phase four A.
Four A.
We do not have it planned in that phase. I received those comments yesterday and talked to the developer about that this morning, and he is going to get with the property owner, the current property owner, and see if they would have any problems because it is right here so close, see if they can go ahead. We had originally shown it as part of this phase, but why couldn't we go ahead and just dedicate it to the city earlier than that? Because to get it back to 10 acres, you're probably going to have to get rid of this lot anyway. So it would be adjacent. So we're going to, we're going to try to, you know, speed that process up and see if we can't dedicate it a lot earlier than it's shown on here. But like I said, we have not gotten through those discussions simply because I was not aware of that until last night.
So if we approved that phase contention upon the park being there, you know, my concern being that it has been moved around and I don't, you know, I like to see the park built. I don't know if the rest of the members feel the same way, but, you know.
Are you saying that I approve the contingent upon the park being upgraded with phase four A?
Yes.
I can, I can say that four A would probably be problematic. Four B would probably be more likely. Four B is all of this, but just the timeline involved. Y'all actually see construction drawings on phase four A. Like, we're, we're printing them right now, actually. They're supposed to start printing them in about 45 minutes. That could very, be very problematic from our end from a timeline standpoint, but phase four B could possibly be, you know, very, very likely. We've got to get in discussions with the existing property owner because that, this property has to be bought, purchased from them by my client and then dedicated to the city.
Yeah, we've moved this park several times.
Well, we have, but we just moved it from here to back.
I understand, I understand.
Are you through with plat three?
Plat three is complete. All of this has final plat approval, and this last portion there are currently constructing new homes. You also have on your agenda that little piece right there for final plat. That's all that's left in all of this, is these, I think it's 11 lots, that little piece right there of Pendle Brook. Everything else is done.
Yes, sir, yes, sir, there.
Ask him a question.
Where, where exactly is the city limits, roughly?
Oh, that would be right about here.
Okay.
Well, it goes, all of River Chase, I believe, is in the city limits. Correct, Joel? So the city limits go like this, they come down, they cut, all of Glenbrook phase one is in the city.
Okay.
We were able to annex it prior to the moratorium.
Okay.
Glenbrook two, you know, we petitioned for annexation, but we're not granted, do the moratorium, but all of this, all of Pendle Brook and Glenbrook phase three is also in the city limits. So phase two is what is not in the city limits. None of this is in the city limits.
Okay, okay, well.
We have submitted an application for annexation.
Okay, and how about explain, because in very simple terms, because the park is part of phase four A, why should it be put off until four B, which is no connection to it?
We actually had it as part of four D.
But four A is directly below it in your drawing there?
It is. We had it drawn as it was part of this along, that, because that's where Old Ridge Road starts being realigned. And we had it as part of that, but I've talked to my client, and that's where it's, that's essentially what it's been since day one. It's always been much later in the process. But I've talked to my client, and this is just a timing issue. He wants to, you know, it may not be really associated with that. It could work along a different schedule, but he will start working on that process, but it, I very, there's not really any way under the current timeline to get it done as this, as part of this first phase. Does that make sense?
Yeah, we could really aggravate you by not approving that first phase.
Yes, absolutely.
Yes.
So we can, we can aggravate you next time, is what you're saying.
Yes.
Maybe we will.
And, and we will work diligently on it.
But you are hearing that we want that.
Yes, ma'am.
You know, rather than later.
And maybe, maybe between now and then, we will have come up with a solution and can actually give a definitive timeline, you know, if we, you know, if we could come up with something that no lots will be allowed past four A or something like that until this park is dedicated, we'll work towards that. It's just I didn't have the time.
I bet you can, I bet you can do that.
Yeah.
But we will certainly, I have not had a chance to speak to Mr. Aben about it.
Yeah.
But you understand.
I do, I do understand, for all.
The rest of the members of the council, I mean, committee, commission, excuse me, is not going to go past this phase.
I understand.
Without having the park pass this particular time, in my opinion, but, all right. Is there any other questions for Mr. Rice?
I have a question on a different subject.
Yes.
Mine's concerning the sanitary sewage and storm runoff. Have you submitted plans, whatever, to the?
Tomorrow morning.
Okay.
Tomorrow morning, the, I have met with the city engineer multiple times on this. We have a sanitary sewer lift station located right here that will be, that will travel through Forest Main all the way down here, come all the way to Highway 14, and it will not, it will not be included in this, in this sewer main that was constructed by the city some years ago. We understand that that's, that line does not have capacity. So we're taking it all the way to Highway 14, going under 14, and dumping it into that trunk line that's on the other side of 14. And from a stormwater standpoint, like I said, that is a wet retention pond, and that's the point of the seawalls is that's our, that's our free board to, that's going to be, as well as being a wet pond, it will also be the detention facility for the, for the situation. It's completely designed, and those plans will be to the city tomorrow morning.
Any other questions for Mr. Rice? Thank you, Mr. Rice.
I believe y'all have answered or asked most of the questions that we had concerning these changes. As Mr. Rice said, this, these are not really much in the way of material changes. You may have noted in the memorandum I sent out to you, this is 40 fewer lots in phase four than they had originally proposed based on their, their better understanding of the property. The park location is back to where it was when you approved the, the site originally, and so we're make, you know, we're satisfied with that location. In fact, that's a better location long-term. Timing, y'all have covered that pretty thoroughly, so I will skip past it. Mr. Gardner, to answer your question, sewer is going to be a concern, and certainly the city is trying to get in a position where we're prepared for that. Sewer is not, that is a work session that this, this board needs to have fairly soon, just so you understand the complexities of growth in the Pine Creek sewer basin. That plant is going to need to have a substantial upgrade, and that upgrade is not just in the plant, it is in the trunk system that serves the plant. This, this development alone is roughly, just let's say 300,000 gallons per, per day. That is, that's a chunk of capacity that's just going to this one single development. The Pine Creek Basin covers Old Farm Lane, Old Ridge Road, areas where we expect to see growth, and so we're, we're still behind, as we have been through most of the growth period, trying to keep up with infrastructure, but we are aware of the problems.
Of course, a question regarding that, I know this is a longer question, but there's a plan to divert some of that which goes to Pine Creek to Otter Creek, and where is that?
There was a discussion at this point. That one has been kind of pushed aside a little bit from a feasibility standpoint. It was not as easy as it appeared to be at one point. But the availability of the Otter Creek plant to accept some of the flow is still out there, and there's discussions about how to deal with that. Sewer is a major concern. It is an item that most folks don't think about, talk about, or even wonder where it goes when you flush, but it is a concern that the city is, you know, trying to deal with as, as we can. The city's taken progressive steps to do that, and I think that discussion is very helpful for y'all at some point in the near future, Mr. Chair, to have that as a work session.
Okay.
But as far as this development is concerned, as it progresses, the city will have the capacity to address it. And certainly at this early phase, there's still capacity to address certainly phase four, probably well into phase five.
Yes, sir, go right ahead.
Mr. Duke, what size trunk line go to that Pine Creek? And what would be the full capacity of that Pine Creek, if you know?
Mr. Gardner, I wouldn't, I would, I'm not going to sit here and tell you I know it off the top of my head, and of course it is a, it changes through the length. If you're asking about the size going into the plant, it's a 20-plus inch line. As it reaches where they're talking about connecting, it's at least a 12-inch line. So there is, you know, there've been some upgrades over time. There needs to be more, not just to address this development. This development is one of many that we anticipate seeing. So, you know, the city's wastewater department has been working with their engineer to get that taken care of. The mayor may want to address it, may not. I think, I think, like I said, a, a work session, just so y'all understand the scope. And we've had this discussion, well, for I guess the last 12 months, starting with discussions at Rochester Hills and McQueen Smith Road. And once you start looking at how much of the city and how much of the area that's going to be developed in the next decade, next two decades, is in the Pine Creek Basin, it's kind of, it's kind of shocking, really. We've known that, we've been looking at it for some time. The city's getting itself into a position where that infrastructure can be paid for, so, but y'all need to get a better understanding of it. So that when you have these questions, we've already covered some of it.
I can, simply because we've been working on that, I can answer one piece of that. Where we're tying in on the other side of 14 is an 18-inch.
18-inch, excuse me.
What? An 18-inch.
An 18-inch.
Trunk line, trunk line.
Question, how many lots have you developed already? And how many is in phase four, and how many in five and six?
Already?
Thereabout, I don't, I don't need exact numbers, just thereabouts.
I'm speaking your mic, so you can get it recorded.
Yeah, come on over here.
Already, you'd be looking at 350, well, 320 or so, plus the 50 that were already in Pendle Brook, that we didn't develop, but my client did build on. So that's how many we've already done. And phase four, according to our new layout, phase four has 356. So essentially, all of this is comparable to what we've already done. And then phase five has 226, six is another 91, and we're estimating phase seven to be 362.
Okay.
1,035 lots currently on this plan is what we're estimating, that completion. More than likely, that would shrink some as we get, gather better data. It always seems to work like that, it never gets more. I don't know why. That's because we get happy when we initially lay it out, but, you know, 1,000 lots, plus or minus, on this plan.
Just to finish up, your questions about annexation, about park and phasing of the park, as Mr. McCauley, I think, and also Mr. Smith mentioned y'all get another shot at that at preliminary plat, and we will certainly be trying to get those questions answered before that. But as far as the overall is concerned, and understanding that things do change between sketch and preliminary in a modern way, this, this layout with the caveats about increasing the size of the park and dealing with phasing being handled, we're certainly okay with this, this layout. Recommend approval.
Thank you. Any other questions for Mr. Rice or Mr. Duke? Are we ready to go forward with this? All right, all in favor, signify by raising your right hand. All opposed, like sign. Let's see that part. Number four is going to be a public hearing. Oak Creek plat number two, and is it Oak Creek plat number?
Oak Creek plat number two is the first one.
It's the first one.
We got plat number three also.
And we got plat three. Can we combine the two public hearings, or is that something that we can do? Is it all the?
Yes, sir, I think there's no, as long as it's clearly stated, this is for both plats. They're the same developer, they're roughly the same piece of property. There should be no problem with combining those.
All right, then we will combine those two together as a one public hearing, and we want to read them first, or we're just going to do the public hearing first? All right, do you want to just tell folks what we got? And then we're going to talk to everybody about it? Or are you the developer, Mr. Gillen? Or the spokesman for the developer, I should say?
Yes.
All right, what we got?
What we have here is the extension of the Oak Creek plat number one, and the plat number two is just a two lot that's set up right here, and I've got it drawn on a larger scale on the backside. And then the extension of Fortrey Drive and the extension of Dunbegen Drive. This was submitted in, I think, 2007, it was approved. We carried it along for several years, coming back to extend the approval, and then at this point in time, we're trying to get things back in order because Mr. Post is trying to begin the process of building.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir, go ahead.
This is a public hearing. These folks are trying to see this, but they can't see it. They don't know, this is, but the public hearing is for the public. We're giving our part, we're giving our part on the table. So just so you're able to see what's going on.
I'm sorry. We don't know any of the details.
All right, we about to go over.
Did you remember thinking years ago?
No, I never.
You were remembering, you're blacking this. This is Dunbegen Drive, this is corporate, and that plaque is just too long. Just extend.
No, that's, that's what I pronounced.
But it's, that's the extension of that, that looks like
Okay, that's what I thought.
Mr. Chair, we've. Mr. Chairman, we, since we're recording this, we probably need to get?
Yeah, yeah, Mr. Gillen, we need to be up here at the, but we are going to have an opportunity for them to see it.
And if we could just ask Mr. Gillen to describe the number of lots and all that.
Yes, we will do that. Mr. Gillen? Yes, we will.
These lots are going to be every one lot. A lot of the lots in the previous subdivision, I think, were 75. The purpose here to go to the larger lots at that time was to, so we could get some driveways on the side of it without any problems. I was speaking with you earlier about the 1,900 square foot range which some of those houses are built. I don't know that he's going to maintain the 1,900 square foot because of the economy now, some of the houses are a little bit smaller. But that's a decision he hadn't totally made yet on the exact minimum size of that.
There's not even a single family?
All single family, yes.
Yes, we will give you an opportunity to ask some questions in just one second, okay? And we will. Thank you, Mr. Gillen, for explaining it. Ladies and gentlemen, this is going to be a public hearing, this is the Prattville Planning Commission. We're made up of volunteers and some city workers. And on normal occasion, we will have a city representative from the council. Thank you, couldn't get that out. But we are all here, and we're part of the community to be here for the citizens of the community. And so we are here to listen to you and your concerns about what's going on. If you would come register with Ms. Morgan, and then we will answer, or we will talk to you about it and try to answer any questions. So if you'd come register with Ms. Morgan, and then come up and speak into the microphone, if you've got any questions, come on up.
I don't have any questions on this, it's a matter of something else.
Okay. All right, does anybody want to come on in and sign in? Yeah, absolutely. I need to explain.
He didn't say I need to get me speaking if I need to.
All right, he's almost finished, I think. Come on up, tell us who you are and where you live and?
All right, Anthony Byrd, I live at the 828 Dunvegan Drive. And our concern is, of course, the size of the houses, of what's going to be brought in, when the construction is going to start, approximately how long this is going to take. Also, we're right next to Port Street, right there, and we're just seeing what kind of impacts that would have with our two areas there next to that.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Thank you. All right, anyone else? All right. All right.
My concern is?
Now, speaking, I'm sorry, tell us who you are first.
Oh, sorry, my name is Bonnie Wise, I live at 903 Porchtree Drive. And my concern is, and I'm not quite sure by looking at that, but it looks from where Porchtree is coming out, that they're going to extend it, that they have a right, it looks like possibly it's going to be a dead end. However, I am concerned about it going in the neighborhood behind us, because you go from 150 to $200,000 homes in our neighborhood to right next door, within less than a half, or less than a quarter of a mile, to 30 to $50,000 homes. That is a huge difference, and if those two intermingle, it could cause all of our property values to go down. So that is a major concern.
Okay. And that is a? Yes, sir.
For intervening, what do you mean by that?
Well, what is, once the streets start to merge, it looks like, it looks like it's going to stop, right there where he's pointing. However, if at any point they start to merge, the possibility of, well, you've seen, I'm from New Jersey, so, and I'm a broker, a real estate broker in two different states. And I have noticed that when you have a lower subcommunity, or lower subdivision, and a higher subdivision start to merge, things seem to go on a down end, property values start to go down, things like that. And I just don't want to see that happen here. Prattville's a great place, our neighborhood is fantastic, it's very small right now, but a lot of ex-military and prior military, and it's really a great neighborhood. And I just don't want to see the property values go down.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Would you like for me to address issues?
Absolutely, I was going to see if anybody else wanted to speak, but absolutely.
I'm sorry, I don't bring in sketch plans, which would address their concerns right there. This street is set up to come down and turn down and come down here into a cul-de-sac. And it wouldn't, it'd never come to Carver Street, because that's a separate development within itself that was approved a month ago. Actually, six or seven years ago, and then again a month ago. The future streets that we shut to north are to just go to the north and loop back up to the north, up along the power lines up to the north. And there's no connection to the north, to the Bala Karas, there's no connection to the west or to the east, it's all self-contained. And it all drift back there so you can go out anyway, Carver Street or to the uptown.
All right, is there any other questions? This is a public hearing, and if anybody, does the public have any more questions or comments or anything else on this particular matter? These two items, all right? I will, when I say the public hearing's closed, that doesn't mean people get up and leave, I'm just closing the public hearing so we can discuss this matter. But if there's nothing else, then we will close the public hearing portion of this. Now, discussion? Questions? That's for real, absolutely, let's read it, and I'll kind of jump to things. Will you read it over for me?
I will. Resolution, preliminary plat, Oak Creek subdivision plat number two, March 19th, 2015. Whereas Magna Development and Builders LLC is the owner of Oak Creek subdivision plat two. And whereas the proposed development is located inside the city limits of Prattville, off Live Oak Drive at Porchtree Drive. And whereas the initial preliminary plat for the proposed development was approved November 2nd, 2006. And whereas a public hearing for the proposed development was heard on March 19th, 2015. And whereas the city department heads have reviewed and commented on the proposed development, now therefore be it resolved that the City of Prattville Planning Commission hereby gives its favorable review of the submitted preliminary plat of Oak Creek subdivision plat two. So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Here's a second. All right. We want to read in three, too, or do them individually? Need to be separate, okay. I got you. All right, any questions or comments on this? Yeah, okay, Mr. Duke, you ready?
Let's just start. I'm going to talk in general terms, probably about both of these.
Okay.
And certainly, but y'all need to deal with them separately, because they were presented separately, the developer wishes to have them approved separately. But the preliminary, excuse me, the sketch plan for Oak Creek subdivision was last modified back in July of 2007. And that created kind of the looped street, or the looped street between Dunvegan and Porchtree that Mr. Gillen spoke about. The two preliminary plats that are before you here today match that sketch plan. Just to answer the question, as Mr. Gillen did, this subdivision does not connect back out to Carver Street, Port Street. It's Core Street up until Live Oak, and then it becomes Carver. It does not connect to that area, and it does not connect to the property directly to the north, which is Austin Valley Drive, which is a private subdivision, where the lots are all five acres and greater, and it's a private street. So there is no connection, even though at the beginning of this, we asked for there to be a connection, and the creation of that subdivision kind of cut that pathway off. Certainly, we would have preferred to see something connect to the north, but that was kind of closed off many years ago. To the west of this property, and just a little further north than this Oak Creek Three, the property directly borders Wilderness Park, and what you asked for in the original sketch plan is that there be some connection. In fact, it was approved at the initial preliminary plat, that there be some connection to Wilderness Park. So when that portion of the property is developed in a latter phase, we'll be looking for that to come back into consideration. Basically, to sum up, this 47-lot extension, or 49 if you count the two together, matches the sketch plan that was approved. Conditions have not changed, the lots are a little larger than what was originally plotted in the first phase. There is an outstanding issue that Chief Johnson and I have talked about, concern about water pressure that shows up consistently in all the reviews. We'll need to resolve that before we release it for construction. But the only other point I made in our review was looking at phasing. We would prefer to see, instead of one street advance, the other street advance, and then in the third phase of this Oak Creek Three, they connect them at the top, we'd rather see both streets advance simultaneously, so that we don't create a long run. I always need to be aware that development ebbs and flows, and so they may get to a point where they don't, are not able to continue or finish the development, we would like to be in a position where there's not a long run of street that's not connected together. Am I clear on that? So what we want to see is, instead of Phase Two, excuse me, the first couple of phases advance Porchtree, and then the next phase is advanced Dunvegan, we'd like to see both of those kind of advanced, and then run together in the third phase. I think that's something that can be adjusted, is that good? No? Okay, well, I'll let Mr. Gillen speak to that in a second. But the main reason is that we've recently, in this forum, discussed Heather Drive, which was allowed to advance well past 1,000-foot limitation, in anticipation of it eventually connecting back out. We were, 20 years later, still discussing that, we would rather not be in that position where we can avoid it. So that's our only concern, other than that, it matches the sketch plan, certainly fits the zoning. And I think we can resolve the water issue, if we can't, we'll probably have to come back and discuss that further. But that's an engineering question. Be allowed to answer any questions at this point.
Yes, ma'am.
You had a question about the purpose of the 20-foot easement on the west.
Yeah, there was really, in our review comments, we ask a lot of questions that really don't have any bearing on whether or not the lots can be approved. It was just a curiosity, and I haven't got an answer to it, but it's still not a, if they would like to have a 20-foot buffer that they're going to vegetate, that's fine, it's not a requirement. I just, we're just trying to make sure they're clear that that's not a, sometime later, we'll get a question from a property owner and say, why is this here? And we just want to understand the developers' thinking on that. It's not a city requirement.
Where is that 20-foot? Okay.
Mr. Chairman, yeah, that's going to be along the western line here.
I see it, yeah, okay. I got it. All right, any questions for Mr. Duke? Yes, sir. Mr. Duke, it seems to be, from your information to Mr. Gillen, seems to be a tremendous amount of things that are unknown. And here, this particular one, I don't believe I've seen a report from y'all of this much stuff, it hadn't been explained or settled before it came to this. And I'm making myself, and I'm making myself clear, sometime I have a problem making myself clear, it just?
No, sir, I mean, there's, everything here is really a matter of understanding their plans, I, we have not, there's nothing here that?
Nothing derogatory against, it's just that?
Right, it's just, it's just questions that generally need to go back and forth.
Question and answer period, okay, all righty.
Right, question about drainage crossing lots, there may need to be a drainage easement put in, a catch basin. I may not be understanding Mr. Gillen's drawings, and those are?
My simple question is, are they ready for us to do this?
Yes, sir, other than the phasing, which is a question that y'all need to address, and Mr. Gillen needs to address, everything else, I think, can be worked out easily.
I think we would? All right, thank you. Well, they're not listening anyway, so too many sidebars, I can't even hear what you're saying, thank you so much. We're looking at just right now, we're looking at Plat Two, which is just the, what, the four lots? And so we're kind of moving over to our next discussion.
Yes, sir.
And so that question was for the next discussion. But right now, what we have before us is these four individual lots. Is that correct?
Yes, sir, there is absolutely.
We can't jump into the next one, they are separate. I apologize. That's quite all right.
The two lots?
I'll do it again in a minute. All right, that's good, I'll let you.
The two lots in Plat Two are certainly?
So do you see any issues with the two lots that we have in front of us, and then we will discuss the next one?
No, sir, and I apologize for running them together.
That's quite all right. All right, any questions on these two lots that we have on Plat Two? Does anybody have anything for Mr. Gillen on these two lots, and only these two lots, for Plat Two? Okay, let's vote on it. All in favor, signify by raising your right hand. Opposed, like sign. Now, let's go on to the next one. Now we have Oak Creek subdivision plat three, we've already had a public hearing. Mr. Dallas, could you read that in for me, please, sir?
Yes, sir, resolution preliminary plat, Oak Creek subdivision plat three. Whereas Magna Development Builder LLC is the owner of Oak Creek subdivision plat three. And whereas the proposed development is located inside the Prattville city limits of Dunvegan and Porchtree. And whereas the revised sketch plan of the proposed development was approved on July 19th, 2007. And whereas the initial preliminary plat of the proposed development was approved on, was approved November 1st, 2007 with contingencies. And whereas a public hearing for the proposed development was heard March 19th, 2015. And whereas the city department heads have reviewed and commented on the proposed development, now therefore be it resolved that the City of Prattville Planning Commission whereby gives its favorable review of the submitted preliminary plat of Oak Creek subdivision plat three. I so move.
There's a second?
Second.
Thank you, sir. Now, we have heard from Mr. Duke on this, we can talk to him some more, or we can ask any questions anyone has right this time. Mr. Duke, do you have anything to add on this particular area that we have not already discussed?
I think I have a few more.
Okay.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Duke, knowing my concerns with the water situation as is, what would be beneficial to passing this today? For example, if we're going to have major water issues, would it be better to hold it so we could discuss it and try to find out where we are going with this? I don't have a problem with a couple more houses coming in here, I don't think it's going to check. You pushed your button. I'm sorry. That's all right. A couple more houses is not going to create a major issue. I do have some concerns that are engineering in nature, so my question is, would it be better in a way to table this and let's have a, let's sit down and discuss these issues? Or would, in your opinion, is it better to go ahead with this, and then? th- these issues, or, or would, in your opinion, is it better to go ahead with this and then throw the brakes on later? What, give me some direction on that.
The, if, if you wish to, to, if, if you think it can be resolved and we can push it forward, then approving it today contingent upon that being addressed before they get started with construction, that would be no problem. That would just get it off the commission's docket. If you wish to hold it, there's no problem with that either. Um, there's, there's absolutely no, um, from, from my standpoint, no great urgency to push it forward. So, um, now, I don't, I'm not the developer.
Sure.
So, I, I prefer to get the questions addressed and dealt with, but it can be dealt with either place. I mean, we're going to, you and I are going to deal with that. We're going to deal with Mr. Gillen.
Absolutely.
We're going to get our questions satisfied. Um, if you want to move it off the commission's docket, that's fine, or you can just leave it here till next month. I mean, it, it's not a...
Can I make a quick comment?
You, you do, you do have a, you do have a limitation. Have, you have to deal with it within thirty days of the public hearing, but you'll do that at your next meeting. You'll still be within the, the state law requirements. So...
Okay.
Um, there, there's no issue from my standpoint with holding it.
Now, Mr. Gillen.
Correct me if I'm wrong. This has been brought up before when we get to the first phase.
Okay.
The concern was brought up when we went into the second phase and had this...
Go ahead and move it over so you can put it in.
We brought this back up in two thousand and six it was brought up. When we go back to talk to the Water Works Board, they looked me straight in the eyes and says, it's a simple solution. It's us putting you in the upper system and off the lower system. So, that means they go in there and they turn valves so that the pressure's coming off the high end of the city instead of the lower end of the city.
Mm-hmm.
Now, Dallas, have you heard this too?
No, sir. This is for, back in, let me refer to my notes.
This was oh-six, the first time it came up.
October sixteen of twenty-seven, I wrote up that we had low water flow and pressure. I didn't recommend extending the subdivision until this issue was resolved, um, and I've heard nothing back since.
We, we don't want to build it without the pressure either.
Well, we can't build it.
We're in perfect agreement. I mean, I'd love for you to prove it, and then we work this out, but I've been told more than twice that that's all it was, was to rework the valves, but they never go back and rework the valves. Because everything is interconnected to the upper half and lower half, and it's just cut off, they just choose which street to cut it off. So, that's, so basically, I would say that we do need to go and resolve this, and we'll get the Water Works Board back out here to do this, and if I don't get it approved, then we're not going to build it.
Yes. Mr. Garner. Uh, Greg, whose responsibility is it for to get that pressure up?
Well, I, every time I spoke is to William, so I'm going to put it on William. William Bradley. He runs, he basically runs the system out, you know, the outdoor activities in the system. So, I think that collectively, we, we, we need to go back to him and discuss it and make sure that he's going to do what he told us he would do last time, or he told me.
Okay. Uh, can he put that in writing for us then, or can you get that to...
I think we're going to have a meeting and request it, yes. I think for my benefit and my client's benefit, if we need it also, yes, I agree. But, and it's, it's going to come down to, um, Mr. John, Chief Johnson's, I call it his, it's the city's, um, fire code is really going to basically drive that. And so, if, if the water board can't provide that, then it's, then we're going to have to drop back a little bit and decide whether, how much of this can go forward to a stopping point, but till they get that resolved. Now, that, this is not a city system, so the, the city will be at the, kind of at the, and the developers as well, at the mercy of the water board in getting that adjusted. And the water board may put some of that burden on the developer, as they often do, but, um, it'll get resolved somehow.
So, in essence, what you are saying then, if, even if they build this subdivision and it not, doesn't meet the fire code, then it can be halted at that point until such time that water pressure get where it's supposed to be? Is that what you're saying?
Well, what, what Chief Johnson and I are saying is that, um, I'm, I'm just going to go ahead, so there's so many questions here, recommend that you hold it. I don't see that being, it's not an issue as far as meeting a code requirement, and I think that most of y'all would feel a lot more comfortable if we can get it resolved before you approve it. But even if you were to approve it with a contingency today, Chief Johnson and I are going to make sure that gets resolved before they're, before they put the first lot in. And your final say would be not to allow the final plat if somebody were to be crazy enough to move forward on something without that being resolved. So, you, you have other steps. The city has steps to kind of control this.
I kind of feel confidence to let them move forward and on this particular phase, and if such times that, uh, uh, they don't meet the code, then they can always be stopped on the next phase. But if we stop now, we stop progress, and I like to see progress.
Yes, sir. Again, I think you have options, uh, that'll be up to the board, um, but...
All right. Thank you, Mr. Duke.
Mr. Chairman, I, I know if we hold this...
All right, there's a motion to hold.
Second.
There's a second.
A second.
All right, we got, Ms. Carpenter's got you there. All right, um, there's been a motion to hold this, and then the, the second. All in favor signify by raising your right hand.
Could we discuss this?
Oh, sure.
The Department, you know, the...
Yeah, go ahead. That's good. There's my motion.
I, I'm against holding this. I'm in more in favor of doing with, uh, like Joel says to, with, if they do this, in other words, add a, amend the motion if they do that. Is that what you're trying to tell us?
Yes.
Didn't Joel's...
That's what he's, that's what he's trying to...
Would that be... I, I don't want to stop. Is it fair weather? We've had so much bad weather, now it's time to build, you got to strike while iron's hot and go.
Mr. Ross, as, as I said, certainly the, we'll work with whatever y'all decide. It can be dealt with in several fact, several means. Holding it, um, i- is certainly one way to do that, and I don't think that, um, just in discussions with Mr. Gillen, I don't think that's going to impact the developer negatively to hold it for, for a month.
Okay, fine. I, I'll go along with it then.
Okay.
Thank you.
Is, any other discussion? All right, all in favor of holding it signify by raising your right hand. Opposed, like sign. All right. It appears that the, it is held. Um, our next item, number six, is preliminary plat, Nick, yes, sir, Nick, um, Fink?
I voted for it.
You voted for it?
Yes, I did.
Okay. Mr. Garner voted for that resolution. Okay. All right. Um, the, resolution, preliminary plat, Nick Fink, plat number one, March nineteenth. I think that's my one. Um, somebody read, uh, Mr. Nelson, can you read that in for me, please, sir? Oh, I'm sorry, this is a public hearing. I apologize. I apologize, this is a public hearing. I just saw that. Um, would anybody like to come up and speak for or against this particular issue, or would somebody tell us what's going on? Tell me what's going on.
This is the, uh, Mr. Nick Fink's property. This is the swimming hole located right here at Page Court on US Highway thirty-one. The, the purpose of his plat is to, uh, subdivide his property between the swimming hole building and the adjacent building that's right there next to it.
Okay.
And then in the process, the city has asked Mr. Fink to incorporate the neighbors in to clear up some plating issues on the adjoining properties to, to get everything in good plating order. So, we're here just basically to plat the two lots, but it's turned into a, a five-lot plat at this point in time.
All right.
And all the neighbors have agreed at this point in time.
Anybody need to see that particular thing? Okay. You can come up and look at it real quick if you need to look at it.
Can I ask you a question?
Uh, we, one moment. You will, you will be allowed to, but if you need to look at it, we will get you to sign in and, and ask the questions. This is a public hearing, and the public is encouraged to come up and, and ask questions and participate. Um, do we have anybody that wants to come up and address us? Yes, sir. Have you signed in?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Tell us who you are and where you live.
My name's Ken Stedoll. I live at seventeen-ten Meadow Brook.
Okay.
I am the senior pastor of Open Door Baptist Church, which our property is real, comes right down into here, right on its backside, so I'm concerned of what the future, why are you plating this? What is your goals for, why are you doing this?
Okay. Well, the purpose is, is he, Mr. Fink owns all this property here. He has one building here, and he has, these are existing buildings.
Right, I know.
He's basically dividing it up in between the buildings so he could sell lots individually if he chose to sell off a small portion of it.
Okay, just for other commercial zone usage?
No.
No?
I mean, just, it's already used is what it is. It's just to separate the properties into two different legal...
So, it's just a technicality for him to go in there?
Yeah, that is correct. And then these lots were added just because we're cleaning up the platting.
Okay, so there's no development necessary coming along?
No development, no, no proposed development or...
Okay. All right. Very good. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Does anyone else have any desire to come up and speak or ask any questions? It is a public hearing. All right, I'm going to close the, or, Mr. Fink, would you like to come up and speak to us? I'd love to hear from you. That record show, I did go by and speak to Mr. Frank. Um, I was in there getting chemicals installed to him.
And I appreciate that.
Yes, sir.
I live at ten-seventy-nine Arrowhead Drive. I own both pieces of property, ten-twenty-three, ten-twenty-five South Memorial Drive. Originally purchased ten-twenty-three from Sam Rucker, and in the process of doing that, I also purchased then ten-twenty-five, which is the building next door to smaller of the two. At the time I got the, uh, the paperwork on those two properties, it ended up that ten-twenty-three, the side of the building, was the property line, which meant that the air conditioning for ten-twenty-three, the heater, the air conditioning, the electric was all on the property of ten-twenty-five. I said, well, there's a word. Heck, this ain't going to work. Especially if I want to sell one and somebody said, now, wait a minute, you can't come in here anymore, and ingress and egress, you know, type of situation. So, what I did is I asked to take the property and divide it between the two buildings. While in the process of doing that, I ended up with a, a property line that went down through here, and on this big building, I got two big outside air conditioning units. Well, the property line ran right through the air conditioning unit. They come down here, and there was about a two or three-foot dogleg left and right down here and then lined up, and then went around here where these two lots are that Mr. Rucker still owns, and, you know, for whatever reason, he just, he built onto the building, and this is the physical, you know, the property line. Well, there's X space and Y division. So, what we did is, or what I've done is, and on this line here, I talked to the VFW, the post here, and I talked to the property owner here, and what it amounted to, there was a curb and gutter that ran here in a straight line. So, what I've, what's amounted to here in this case is, we've moved the line here, followed this curb and gutter that goes all the way back, it took that dogleg out, went straight back to this point, straightened out the property line in that respect, okay? It ends up, you know, space, but at least it didn't go through my air conditioners anymore. It went beside them. And so, even though easement-wise or commoning-wise, that's where I'm at, but that was the whole process so that if I wanted to sell this, or this building, either one, there would be a way for the individual owners to have access or something for the building that they're in, as opposed to just the metal side of this building and the metal side of this building being the property line, which is what it originally was, which didn't allow for much when it came to my, like I said, the air conditioners, my water line, the gas lines that were back there and all that were all a part of the property for ten-twenty-five, and I had nothing. Therefore, that's the whole idea. That's what this amounts to. And I've talked to both these owners and their, and Mr. Rucker. Everybody is good to go.
You did a better job of explaining that.
You did a great job.
And that's not hard to do, but...
You asked for that one, didn't you?
Go for it.
I'm sure there's no questions, right?
Yes, go for it.
Thank you.
Is there any other question for Mr. Fink?
That's all right, yeah.
Anything else for Mr. Fink? All right, um, the, the public hearing is hereby closed. Now, um, Mr. Nelson, or, I guess we need to read this in, so let's go ahead and read it in.
Resolution preliminary plat, Nick Fink, plat one, March nineteenth, twenty fifteen, whereas Nicholas Fink is the owner of Fink, Nick Fink, plat one, and whereas the proposed development is located inside the Prattville City limits at ten-twenty-three South Memorial Drive and ten-twenty-four slash ten-fifty Page Court, and whereas a public hearing for the proposed development was heard March nineteenth, twenty fifteen, and whereas the city department heads have reviewed and commented on the proposed development, now therefore be resolved that the City of Prattville Planning Commission hereby gives its favorable review of the submitted preliminary plat of Nick Fink, plat one. I so move. Mr. Chairman.
All right. Your second.
Second.
All right, thank you, sir. Yeah, all right, um, would you like to talk to us about it? I think, I pretty much understand what's going on.
Yeah, just real briefly, what I'm going to make sure, just not, so we don't clear, so we clarify and not mess up. Uh, Mr. Fink started out with, um, hoping to divide the two lots that he owns, and he has essentially agreed to help clean up, uh, some past meets and bounds transfers by adding the other three lots in, and we certainly appreciate that.
Right, yeah.
From now on, these properties will be able to be transferred uniformly and with clear boundaries and not with a meets and bounds description that's different with every transfer. So, we appreciate that very much. That's, that's my comments, Mr. Chairman.
That's good. Thank you. Is there any other comments, questions, or any other discussion needed at this time from anyone on the commission? Yes, sir.
I had the opportunity to go out and visit Mr. Fink, and being a retired highway department, I worked several years, and right away, this is probably one of the worst messes I've seen in a long time. Uh, there are some areas up around that area where it's Prattmont. I sold a house in nineteen seventy, I believe, was still on a safety tank within the city limits of Prattville. Nobody knew about it until it, so something happened. But that's, that's a good thing, and, uh, this would be before Joel's, we're certainly fortunate to have somebody of his capacity and his learning and his expertise, we solved those problems, we had them back then. But of course, you know, that was back in the good old days. There's some sewer lines, the water lines running under some houses up there now. There's a swimming pool built above, on top of a sewer line over in Silver Hills. So, thanks to Joel and his group, we were very fortunate to have somebody with their expertise and their dedication to City of Prattville.
Thank you, sir. All right. Discussion? Well, let's vote on it. All in favor signify by raising your right hand. Oppose, like sign. Let's go ahead and go on to the next item, which is the same thing. Yes, sir. Anybody would...
Can you read that in for me, Mr. Garner? Would you mind? I'll get the mayor over there.
Resolution final plat, uh, Nick Fink, plat number, number one, March nineteenth, twenty fifteen, whereas Nicholas Fink is the owner of Nick Fink, plat number one, and whereas proposed development is located inside the Prattville City limits at ten-twenty-three South Memorial Drive and ten-fourty-four slash ten-fifty Page Court, and whereas preliminary plat of the proposed development was approved March nineteenth, twenty fifteen, and whereas the city department, department head has reviewed and commented on the proposed development, now therefore it be resolved that the City of Prattville Planning Commission have given its favorable review of the submitted final plat of Nick Fink, plat number one.
Mr. Chairman, I so move.
Your second.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Nelson. All right, do, um, is there a need for discussion?
I move that we take a vote.
Uh, thank you. All in favor signify by raising your right hand. Oppose, like sign. Let's move on to the next item. Kendall Brook subdivision plat two C. Mr. Mayor, would you have an opportunity to read that in for, is it now, this is a Mr. Mayor, would you have an opportunity to read that in for, is it now, this is a public hearing? No, that's the next one is. Next one, final plat, my bad. Would you read that into us for us, please?
Yes, sir. Final plat Pendlebrook subdivision plat two C. Whereas Stone Martin Builders is the developer of Pendlebrook subdivision plat two. Whereas the proposed development is located inside the city limits, the west side of Old Ridge Road, north of existing Glenbrook subdivision plaits one and two at Gathering Way. Whereas revised sketch plan for the proposed Pendlebrook subdivision plat two and Glenbrook subdivision plat three were, was approved on July eighteenth, twenty thirteen. Whereas the preliminary plat of the proposed development was approved on August fifteenth, twenty thirteen. Whereas city department heads have reviewed and commented on the proposed development. Now therefore it be, be it resolved, City of Prattville Planning Commission hereby gives its favorable review of the submitted final plat of Pendlebrook subdivision plat two C. Mr. Chairman, I so move.
Alright, your second.
Second to move.
Alright, thank you. I appreciate that, Mr. Hall. Alright, what we got here? Somebody wants to, go ahead, Mr. Rice.
I have the Pendlebrook two C final plat. Uh, we talked a few minutes ago. Uh, I believe this is eleven lots. This is that last little section of Pendlebrook coming back from Pendlebrook Drive tying back into Gathering Way. This includes the amenity lot, um, that we've had discussions about in front of everyone, about the pool. Um, this is where Stone Martin's gonna build the pool for the Pendlebrook residents. Uh, I went to this site before we came out here. They are finishing up curb and gutter today. If it doesn't rain, which I think it's going to, they're planning on paving Saturday and Monday, but that'll probably due to weather get pushed back till sometime next week. So sometime at the end of next week, it'll be paved and backfilled. This is simply a, a final plat approval and completely understand it's subject to final construction being complete.
Great. Any questions? Okay, oh, well, well, not right now, I'm sorry. This is not a public hearing, but we can get something soon. Alright, um, Mr. Duke?
Certainly agree with Mr. Rice about their, their status. Y'all have approved these contingent upon items being completed. We have no problem holding the plat or accepting a bond, whichever they, they choose. It, it's not gonna be released for recording until the construction's completed and all testing is passed. As we've done throughout their development. Be glad to answer any questions at this point. Certainly, y'all have the, the option of holding it if you wish, or you can approve it with those contingencies.
Yes, ma'am.
I'd like to, um, add that this be, um, passed, approved, uh, based on Planning Department approval and all the contingencies.
Okay. Go ahead, say it again so the public can hear you on the.
I'd like to add that, um, to this motion, that it be, uh, based upon Planning Department approval on the contingencies.
Okay. Is there any other, um? Alright, that is an amendment to it. Or there's a question for the amendment, so we have to have a second for that, don't we? Alright, we have a second. Is there a discussion on the amendment to be a contingent? Put a contingency on it. Alright, do you wanna, I guess we need to vote on that particular thing. Alright, all in favor of the contingency on there signify by raising your right hand. Okay. Now, we have the contingency on the resolution. Is there any other discussion?
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
Will please let the gentleman.
Absolutely. Sign. Alright, would you please come, have you signed, I think he's already signed in. So you can come on up and address us at this time.
My name's Shannon Walker. I live at, uh, two two five six Gathering Way. I was the first house built in Phase Two.
Yes, sir.
And my concern is not for the houses being built, but the dirt work that has been done.
Okay.
The, the lot beside me, all the way to the end where the road's gonna make the curve, was flat alongside my house. Now, what we have is a four foot mound of dirt right beside our driveway, not two foot. There's no drainage. The people that live behind me, I've already talked to them. They're concerned about it too because their yards already have a water issue.
Okay.
There's no place for the water to go. Um, there, and I talked to the foreman that was doing the dirt work, and I asked him, I said, do you, do you see my concerns? He said, absolutely, because of the good heavy rain, it's gonna all wash on your property. You know, and I understand that Stone Martin's trademark is building each lot at a little different level. A two foot lot, you know, two foot difference is fine. But when you build a four foot wall beside somebody's house, not only did it make my house look like a dwarf, because they're gonna build a house next to me, they're gonna be looking over into my yard, for one. I mean, we, we sit higher than Phase One does already. Last year, when we had a good rain, we had water and mud already back up in our yard, in the front yard, coming down from Glenbrook. So now what we have is, we're gonna hit, get hit from Glenbrook coming down the hill and from the side. And they, I, I do believe they know it's an issue because behind us is an easement, it's electrical easement. They have come in and put hay bales to block it for when the water starts flowing. Now, when the houses are built and the construction's done, who's gonna come in and put sandbags up where it doesn't only wash me down, it washes the people behind me down? You know, I mean, it's, it's big. I took pictures of it. I took pictures of it on my phone, but like I said, it's, 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 it's tall. And that's, that's all I've got.
Okay, thank you for, thank you for that. Thank you. Yes, sir.
May we see those?
I, I'd like to see those pictures.
Okay, absolutely.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir. Alright, can I see, Mr. Rice, where, where it is on there? Okay.
And you came in, the Pendlebrook, and they developed that first. That was that one corner lot on the right.
The new black, they've already got one of the black to keep the dirt from washing down. They had to put another one in there because they know it's gonna be a washout. That dirt is as high as a six foot fence with my neighbors behind it. I can also show, yes, sir. That, this is the mound right here. These are the neighbors behind me. This is taken from Pendlebrook, looking down towards Gathering Way. Is that the only picture you have of it?
No, sir. I've got some more pictures from my driveway and from my fence. The neighbors behind me, one of them's a state trooper, and he says he already has problems that wasn't addressed in Phase One, that the water's actually washing his property.
Can you see it? You wanna pass it out? Okay. Let Mr. Carpenter see it as well.
Three hundred and forty things about road building is drainage, drainage, drainage.
You know, and like I said, I'm all for the houses because it's just gonna make mine go up. You know, property value's gonna go up. That's great. I love the neighborhood. I just don't wanna run into a water issues later down the road.
Okay. Alright, thank you, sir.
I can show you one more that's taken from my. That's actually taken from my driveway.
And that's the, the difference in the height.
It's four foot. I asked the foreman, he said it's exactly three point seven five feet from me. This is from my driveway. This is the dirt. This is from, from the easement, the ground floor.
Oh, yeah, I know. It is very good. I was wondering how I'm gonna get him in here. I wanted to hear from him, but I thank you for, 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 uh, I was about leaning on the top one, y'all, so how do I get him to talk?
You know, I'm sure y'all wanna hear as well.
Thank you, sir. Uh, we, thank you.
Generally, I mean, this does happen. I mean, fair question. You do have differences in elevations between homes. I will be happy to go by there and look at this particular case. This is obviously the first I've heard about it, but traditionally, what Stone Martin will do, is as they build this next lot, they will grade a drainage swell in between the two lots to ensure that the water drains to the rear. At the rear of these lots was a previously established drainage easement, um, established by the original Pendlebrook developers. And we have done our best, I believe the ownership is actually the City of Prattville. And we've done our best to really just kinda stay out of it because it was done by the original developers and there were some financial issues and that became bank owned property and it was a big, it was a big problem. But this, all these lots drain to the rear, to that, to that drainage channel in between that was originally done as part of the original development. And that's really the only route we have to get this water out. And it's a, it's a wide enough drainage channel, it probably could use some maintenance. Um, and I'm, you know, I'm, I'm assuming that once all the development gets done, the city would probably then come in and, you know, try to do some additional maintaining of that drainage easement or. I'm not even sure if it's an easement. I think it's actually a drainage right of way. I think the city actually owns that piece of property. Okay? And so that is where the drainage ultimately goes. So there, there should not be any problems getting the water post development. Once it's actually landscaped and it's cleaned up and a drainage channel would go in between, it'd be a low swell, something like that deep, something like that wide.
And I agree with you, but my concern is, is when we bought the house, the houses on Addison Way that were just built in Phase Two.
Right.
You need to speak into the mic. Now, come on up here and talk in the microphone.
The houses that they just built on Addison Way have a gradual, a lot of two foot variance in levels. That's fine. The lot next to me would be fine with a two foot variance. They didn't do two foot. When they started the construction over there on this right beside my house was flat. They didn't, they didn't just build it up two foot for the pad for the next house. They built it up four foot because the dirt across the street from us, they had to move it somewhere to build the houses on the opposite side of the street. I feel like they moved that dirt because instead of saying, okay, let's haul this dirt off or put it somewhere else, they said, okay, we'll just move to the other side of the street. So now our house is sitting here, and we have a four foot hill beside us. You know, not only is it gonna be drain problems, but it's just not good to look at.
Yeah, I understand. Alright. Um, thank you.
And I feel like it should've been addressed to me as well before I bought the house on the corner, that they were gonna raise a four foot lot, and you know, it wasn't.
Thank you. Mr. Duke, do you have anything to add to this?
Certainly appreciate the gentleman coming down and explaining his concerns. Uh, there is gonna be a, certainly a vast difference between the in-development stage and the post-development stage. We see this with every development. That being said, uh, Mr. Rice and I were talking about, he's gonna need to feel, verify some of these elevations. Uh, that is a fill area, but there should not be that kind of a drastic change between lots. Certainly with that in mind, I, I, I'm gonna recommend that you hold it, that, that you just hold this and we get it resolved and everybody's, y'all are happy, uh, the property owner's happy. I'm gonna also echo what Mr. Rice and, and the gentleman said. We've had some, some issues with that ongoing drainage way that was installed with Pendlebrook Phase One. Also echoing what Mr. Rice said, the city inherited that one because of a failed developer and we've had basically to try to manage it over time. While there's ongoing development, that is a challenge. As the neighborhood finishes out and the yards get grassed and we quit, it's already better. Before, they came in with the streets that intercept drainage and put them in the pipe, all of that drainage came back to this drainage swell from basically ten acres to the west. Now that the amount of drainage that's coming into that swell directly is, is reduced to less than an acre. So over time, that's gonna get better, but, uh, we need to resolve these questions, uh, certainly in my mind, before you approve it. So I would ask that you hold this.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You alright with holding? Uh, is there any other questions for?
I have, I have a question.
Yes, sir.
What does a shrug of your shoulders mean?
I doubt that there's much I could say to change that motion, so, uh, that, that was really that response. Um, I would much prefer for this to, to be approved and us handle this, which I think we've done in every, in every case in this subdivision. To my knowledge, we've handled each and every problem as they arose, but I didn't imagine that was going to happen.
Well, you know, and three most important things about developing either roadways or subdivisions, the three most important things is drainage, drainage, drainage. And I addressed this group back when, uh, behind my house, country club states, Newell came in. I said, he's gonna rape that land and that was gonna go, oh, it won't go over Highway fourteen? Where, where does it go? First thing goes, floods out some houses down there and talks, heck, look. So, you know, if we adding to the problem, let's tell we add to a problem the man's got now. Alrighty? Thank you.
I, I will say this, that the, the difference in elevation has nothing to do with the drainage.
Okay.
That it doesn't matter if it's four feet or twenty-four feet. Water's going in that direction, it's going in that direction. The differential in the house elevations really does not matter as long as you have the room to get a drainage swell in there to properly handle it.
Thank you, yes, sir. I have a question. Yes, sir. Was that a problem before y'all started moving the dirt? Did he have a problem before y'all started moving the dirt? That you know of?
Know of. Not that I know of.
Thank you.
That being said, the approved construction plans, I can guarantee you, the house adjacent to his was a few feet higher than his. There's no question about that. I don't know what the, if it was three feet, if it was four feet, if it was four and a half feet. I'd have to go back and check my data. The difference is, is the difference in the elevation doesn't matter. I mean, it's the same amount of water and it's, if you have the room to get the drainage channel in, you put it in. And that's what goes on in between every one of these. I imagine the gentleman's main problem is the fact that the runoff, the volume of runoff during construction is so much higher, Mr. Gardner, I know I don't have to tell you, is so much higher due to there being no ground cover. The water does not have a, it does not have a chance to soak in because it's not slowed down by anything. I imagine that's the majority of the problem at this point. But I will certainly, as I always do, check into this issue and make sure that everything's okay.
Okay.
So, obviously.
Alright, thank you. Um, there's been a, thank you. There's been a, um, motion and a second to hold this. Uh, and there hasn't been a discussion, and so I'm ready for a vote on the holding of this resolution. All in favor of holding it signify by raising your right hand. Opposed like sign. We have one opposed and everybody? Alright, it is held. Um, the next, we have a public hearing. It is Eagle Crest plat one. Who is, is there a developer or anybody here representing Eagle Crest plat one? Thank you, sir.
This is it. I think this is the last item.
Thank you, it is.
It's just a long meeting.
Next slide.
This is Jim's Restaurant, located right here. This is the strip center that's been built for about three, four, three years, something along those lines. It, it's in the possession of River Bank. River Bank is basically in possession of all the property. Uh, Manning and Filio developed it back in the day. And, uh, there was always an intention to come in and, and subdivide it at some point in time. But at this point in time, the bank has a purchaser for a lot on. And that's the reason for the timing on trying to get this planted. It was originally one, two, three, four, five, six, seven lots, and we're just cutting the front half of it out and reestablishing the lines and set up access easements so that everybody has access, cross-access easements and things of that nature. I'm trying to explain it as well as Mr. Frank. I'm trying to, my presentation a little bit before I get shot at.
You might need, you might need to hire him.
He does a good job. I just didn't wanna talk about the air conditioner and the gas lines. There's a lot to talk about, actually.
Alright.
I think we've got some comments from Joel. I think Joel is, and George, they made a request that maybe we. made a request, maybe we don't plat all this, all of it at this time, because we don't have a firm commitment, the second and third lot or the fourth lot, and that's something that the, the bank, and they're, they're okay with that. We could come in here, we're doing a preliminary and a lot, we could do the, come back at a later date to take care of the rest.
Thank you. This is a public hearing, and so the public is encouraged to come on down and speak, is there's anyone in the public that wishes to comment, question?
Let me ask you a question.
All right.
Greg, that, where is that, those strip mall at?
It's located on Lot One.
Let me see this.
It's, it's located right here.
Okay. Okay, gee, okay, I see now.
Jim's Restaurant.
All right.
How is it?
Okay.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, I'm going to close the public hearing, and since we've already heard from Mr. Gillen, Mr. Duke, do you, we gotta read it in, let's read it in. Who would like to read it in? Mayor, would you read it in, or you already read something?
Mr. Hall hadn't read anything.
Mr. Hall, would you like to read that in, please?
Be pleased to. Resolution, preliminary plat, Eagle Crest plat number one, March nineteen, twenty fifteen, where Riverbank Truck and Trust is owner of Eagle Crest plat one, and where is the proposed development is located inside the Prattville city limits of twenty fifty, I'm scared of something in this building, it's causing me to stutter and stammer. City limits at ten fifteen, ten thirty-fourth South Memorial Drive, whereas a public hearing for the proposed development was heard on March nineteenth, twenty fifteen, and where is the City of Prattville Department has a review and commented on the proposed development. Now therefore be resolved that City of Prattville Planning Commission hereby gives a favorable review of the submitted preliminary plat of Eagle Crest plat number one. Mr. Chairman, I move we adopt this resolution.
Thank you, is there a second?
Second.
All right.
Sir, I recommend that you approve the preliminary plat, and with the final plat, we had just recommended, as we do with all commercial lots, that for convenience, they go ahead and just take parcels that are not already slated for a specific development, that they keep those consolidated, they can be replatted easily at a later date, these lines are gonna move, they always do. That was our, the extent of our comments, other than that, recommend approval.
Thank you, is there any discussion? All right, all in favor, signify by raising your right hand. Opposed, like sign. Our next thing is final plat, Eagle Crest plat one. Thank you.
Resolution.
Nope. That's the final one.
Resolution, final plat, Eagle Crest plat number one, March nineteen, two thousand fifteen, where is Riverbank and Trust is the owner of Eagle Crest plat one, and where is the proposed development is located inside the Prattville city limits at fifteen-ten to fifteen-thirty-fourth South Memorial Drive, and where is the preliminary plat for the proposed development was approved, March nineteen, two thousand fifteen, and where is the city department heads have reviewed and commented on the proposed development. Now therefore be it resolved that the City of Prattville Planning Commission hereby gives its favorable review of the submitted final plat of Eagle Crest plat one. So moved, Mr. Chairman?
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Discussion? No discussion? All in favor, signify by raising your right hand. Opposed, like sign? Thank you. Now, is there any miscellaneous business?
Very quick.
Yes.
Mr. Chairman?
None, okay. Miscellaneous business is, uh, okay, let's see here, pass those down?
Once I had time, yeah.
Pass those down, you got them going down? Okay, great.
Mr. Chair, I'd, real quickly, this is, as we often do, we like to point out training opportunities to this board, as, as I say, every year, the plant, the city council, and certainly the mayor in his budget presented to the city council, provides funds for this board to receive training. I'm gonna encourage you, at any time you'd like to take advantage of these opportunities, do so. If you don't start that, at some point, they're gonna start taking away those funds, but this is an opportunity that comes up on April the fifteenth, I know an all-day session is very difficult for you to commit that kind of time, and I bring it to you because this is a gentleman that, if you don't, or if you're not interested, I would suggest that you take a look at their, their website. This is a group called Strong Towns, they're based in Minnesota. From what I've heard, folks in Minnesota are not exactly like Alabama, but they do share a common feature in that they're mostly fiscal conservatives, and this gentleman has made a, a case over the last several years, which I'm kind of in favor of, is that the type of development we do today is not necessarily sustainable. And what I mean by that is, that we're kind of in a constant cycle that we need more new development, which is certainly not a bad thing, but we have to have that to kind of sustain the model that most suburban cities are on, which is, and certainly in Alabama, if we don't keep increasing sales tax, then we don't have the funds to pay for needed services. At some point, that's not sustainable. If you look at cities around the nation, like Stockton, California is a drastic example, development kind of stops several years ago, and so they start trying to figure out other ways to pay for needed city services, and it gets into a vicious cycle. This group is, is offering ideas about how to address that differently, I think it'd be very thought-provoking, again, if you just get a chance to look at the website, but this is an opportunity close enough by in Birmingham that I plan to attend, if you'd like to go, we'll certainly make arrangements for you to be there as well.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, that's.
All right, is there any other miscellaneous business? Yes, sir, yes, sir, Mr. Hall?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to address this council commission on a personal issue, not an issue, but this will be my last meeting with you, I will be visiting in, as a, as a guest, but it's come to a time when I think we need some new people on this planning commission, some of us have been on here since, I think, came over when Moses parted the Red Sea, that some of them have been there about that long, so.
That's me.
I, uh.
That's us, buddy.
You know, there's a time to reap, time to sow, and maybe a time to stay and a time to go, but I discussed this with the mayor, and I requested that he just let me tell y'all how much it's been a pleasure being on this commission, because I came on, it's second term in my council tenure, and I've been on it since then, and I told him, of course, we serve at his pleasure, and he told me, he says, "Gene," he says, "If you'll stay there, keep staying till I get ready to tell you." Well, he never did that and come out and tell me, but he kinda offered me something else, so, and I took the hint pretty quick there, and went home and came back the same thing, and says, "When I make up my mind, don't take me long." But I thank you so much, and I, maybe apology necessary once in a while, but I have gotten out of line in time too, but that's just me, that's, that's the way I was raised, to be strong in what you believe in, and I didn't even have to pick on him today, because Mr. Mr. Fink did a good job today for you, buddy. And anyway, I thank you so much, and I, with that, I'll hush, and I say it's been a pleasure, and I thank you so much.
Thank you, thank you. Anything else? Meeting adjourned.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yo, I'm sorry.
I just wanna thank Mr. Hall for all the services, and, and actually have some plans on recognizing him at, hopefully, the next city council meeting, if I can get him to show up for that. But the city does have some various needs, and I thought his expertise, expertise, expertise could be utilized also with the tree commission, so he's gonna be helping the city out in other ways. So, thank you again.
Thank you, anything else?
I would, I would like to propose a resolution from the planning commission to say thank you to Mr. Hall for his years of service, and that we forward that on to the city council from us.
Is there a second? All right, all in favor?
That's right.
Opposed, like sign. All right, and anything else?
Thank you for your service.
Thank you, Gene.
I hate to lose the hall.
Any adjourn?